Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go a little bit out of order tonight. We have two of our Hampton Academy students who have a video we're going to see. I think, are we going to watch the video first?
Yep.
And then you're going to talk? Okay. So are we ready? Okay. So, is that good, Amber? Are we ready? Okay.
Good morning, New Hampshire. I'm Jack Hafey.
And I'm Nathan Goopel. We go to Hampton Academy, and this is why we love our middle school.
To start, our school has one of the largest, all-student-run news programs in the entire state.
We have awesome science teachers like Mr. Shaw, who set up fun projects like tapping maple trees for us.
In our Shark Block enrichment program, we do fun activities related to the science of cooking. We also do fun projects like the eighth-grade oratorical and the science bag puppet.
We love Hampton Academy!
We have great integrated arts like chorus, band, general music, art, computers, French, Spanish, health, and physical education.
Also, our school has tons of spirit. Check out these pep rally pictures.
All of these reasons are why we love our middle school.
So, this project got started when Dr. Costa sent us an email from something she received from the state, asking, you know, "Why, you know, do you think we could have kids do this? Do you have anybody in mind?" And these two came right to our, to the forefront of our mind. They've been doing a lot with Shark News, with Ms. McNichol this year, and, you know, we gave it to them in January, and by the due date, which was probably like, what? How many days later? What was the due date?
The due date, we had to have it in before we went on April vacation, before we went on winter vacation.
Yep. So it was a really quick turnaround, and these boys stepped up and did it.
This was a really fun project. Me and Jack had a lot of fun making it. I know Jack had a lot of fun getting the drone stuck in the tree, filming the outro.
Yeah.
I don't, yeah.
I'll talk about it for a little bit.
Well, we've looked at this project. We looked at it in sixth, in seventh grade with Mrs. McNichol. We were like, "Oh, that'd be cool." We never really followed up with it, but then Dr. Costa sent us an email, and it was, it was really nice to do this project. It was fun.
And our school made a submission to the same contest, and I believe, was it 2019? It was 2019, and we won third place, so we were, that was our goal, was to try to get higher than that, and it came out very good because we got first place, but it was very, it was a fun project to make, and we didn't really need a lot of time because it was only a one-minute video. So again, the quick turnaround. It was helpful having somebody to work on it with as well, so, thank you.
All right. Good job. Thank you, guys. You're welcome. Does anybody have any questions? Well, nevermind. Okay, that's good. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we just wanted a moment to recognize their work. We know that these boys were on their way to Winnicottet, and they've done a lot in our middle school while they were here, including the work they did at the state, where they actually went and presented at the non-conference to talk about oratorical, Shark News, and it's just wonderful when, after they did their work with Dave Cartoon in on the warrant articles, they said to me, "Ah, if you've got something else in mind, let us know," and this did come to my mind, and Mrs. Levine felt it was the perfect thing if they wanted to do. It was completely voluntary, and they stepped right up to the plate. So just wanted to give them some kudos, congratulate them, and thank them for their work on this. And we, we can't wait to see what you do at Winnicottet. We wish you all the best. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule this summer, and, you know, it's a baseball night, and you have a lot going on, so thank you for coming tonight. We wish you well, and we can't wait to see what you're going to do as you move on to high school. So congratulations to both of you, and thank you for coming this evening.
So at this time, I'd like to ask if anyone is here to offer public comment. Seeing none, we will...
No, I think Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry! Come on up! Sorry about that.
I'll come up to you here. Mike Muldoon, so I live at Fuller Colby Street. I have had three kids go through the district. I say "had" because right now, my son Andrew just graduated Hampton Academy, so three different have come through. I just wanted to give, and I'll put my timer on so I don't take too long, that's how I'll do this, a little bit for you as, I'm coming here as not only a coach, but as a parent and as a taxpayer, to kind of give you a little bit. This past year, I coached cross-country and I coached track for that, and I've clearly had all my kids go through the program for all that. So I want to give you a little bit of an update on that because I think it's a great program. So just a couple of things I wanted to start and say thank you is thank you for supporting the program. I also wanted to thank our coaches, Coach Warner, Coach Bowen, Coach Ronderbland, who I'm happy to say was actually one of our students who ran for us and ran there and then kind of came and coached. And I will, I say Coach Thompson, even though she quote-unquote "retired," but I will say Pam Thompson helped out immensely, even though she wasn't quite a coach, so I want to acknowledge that as well. Some accomplishments for us. The unique thing, I think, about our track and cross-country programs is we actually go to, there is a state meet for both of those. So unlike some of our other sports that just kind of are in the seacoast, there's actually kind of qualifying and other standards that happen. So in track, there is essentially a seacoast meet that's a qualifying time. Our students get to run at that. It's usually at Exeter. And the top two in each of the events then get to move forward and go up to our state meet. So I'm happy to say we had nine individuals who were able to go to our state meet, so it's a great accomplishment. Also, some great things for this year. We do have, we do keep records for our track and field program, so some records were broken this year. Our girls' four-by-two broke the record. Our girls' 400 was broken as well, and our, our boys' 200 meet was broken as well. So other things, we had 53 students from our school right here that qualified for the seacoast meet, so that's, that's really good. That does bring me to something as well. I want to thank all of our parents who supported the seven-to-eight meets that we have that helped these kids qualify. Being that 53 qualified for that, I wanted to give you a little bit of info and ask some questions for some things on some numbers. So this year, we had 136 participants in the track program. And one of my little questions, and this was a great presentation by the individuals in the eighth grade on the school, how many do we have in the school, in Hampton Academy? Do you just have a number? I'm just, I like percentages. I was just curious what percentage of the students that represented, because if, I figure it's a fair amount, given the number that we have, you know?
325, let's say roughly.
Sure, so 136 is a fair amount of the student body participating in, in track and field. I would say just based upon, I can't do that quick of math percentage-wise, but that's okay. Historically, I ran some numbers. I asked Coach Thompson to do the same. So 2023, they beat us by one. We had 137. 2022, which was the first year, I would say post-pandemic, because we really didn't have a 2020, and the 2021, we just raced against our own team. We didn't race against others. There was 89, and 2019, we had 116. So I kind of did some things as I was looking around. One of the things that's important to me as a coach and as a parent is the program, but also the safety of the program, right? Because with that many kids in the program, I'm very grateful to our four, our four coaches, myself and the other coaches, but that gets to be a little bit with our ratios of kind of kids, especially outside and different things. So just wanted to bring that to attention, that I think it's probably one of those things that in terms of when we look at resources and different things for programs, given the size of the program, how it's continued to be that size, just resource allocation, I think is important. The other thing I wanted to do is just give you some numbers so that you have something to walk home with, and my goal is to give you some information here. Comparing some of the other schools that we have in the district and what their coaching is looking at. So North Hampton had 15 kids on their team and had two head coaches for that. Hampton Falls has five, and they have one. And Seabrook has 28, and they have an assistant coach, a sixth-grade coach, and a seventh and eighth-grade coach with that, too. So just kind of looking at those ratios, and when we go to a meet, we're required to have so many volunteers, and that's why I'm thankful to the parent volunteers, because we do have so many kids in the program, we have to provide the resources. The unfortunate part is all of our coaches then have to be the officials at the meets, so that gives it, it's difficult for us to actually be there to coach the kids and get them to their events. So I just think it's understanding where the current status of the team is. It's awesome. We've done some good things, but I think it's the resource allocation. And I understand that it's hard to get coaches. Trust me, I've been coaching for a bit, and I understand that as we have new teachers coming into the academy, I think it's just promoting that for them to be able to do that. One of the things I came upon in looking at that, I think, is how we incentivize those people who are in the programs, and I think it's important to look at that. So I have a question on the stipends for coaches in the district. When was the last time that that was adjusted? Do we know?
It's past year?
It's adjusted every year.
Oh, that's right. Yes, you're right.
It's adjusted every year when we, when we negotiate, or every three years, when we, two years, depending on the length of the contract. So it's part of the teacher contract, so when we negotiate with the teachers, collective bargaining, we negotiate that. But I'll be honest, because I've been doing this for 30 years, typically stipends are the last thing to get looked at.
Okay.
It's because it's difficult to do. It's hard to figure out, should a field hockey coach get this and a basketball, and so on and so forth? So typically, all that's adjusted is a percentage for every single one of them.
Sure. And so I guess what, that might, that's my question. You're saying three years ago that was adjusted? Because I did some research and looking back, it's, it seems like when I went back through the archives, it looks like it's been about 10 that it stayed at the same amount. So I just, I'm just curious. It's more like, it doesn't have to be an answer tonight, like I just would go back. So therefore, what I just did, and this is more of me to give you some awareness, I went to SAU 21s and looked at theirs, partially because I think they're ascending school to Winnicottet, right? So it's, it's not an apple to apple, maybe it's an apple to like, a Cortland to Macintosh. Maybe there's similar apples of different variety, right? So right now, head coaches for SAU 90 are 1,689. That's what it happens to be. For a head coach. For a track coach. But, no, so the way, the way our program works in terms of SAU 90 is any head coach, you could be the track coach, you could be the basketball coach, you could be the soccer coach, you'd be whatever, which tends to be one of my things, we're looking at the potential of saying, like, is there, is there something you need to look at and saying, there needs to be a men's or girls' and boys' head coach, given the numbers of the size of the team? So there's multiple ways to cut this pie potentially, of how you look at it, but I think I just want to make you aware. So assisting coaches are 1,082, and an AD stipend is 3,600. If we compare that to SAU 21, they have a four-tiered schedule. So they do a 2023, a 2024, and they go up for the next four years with an increase that right now starts at $1,809. So if we say it's 1,689 for a head coach in SAU 90, and it's 1,809 right now, as in this year, comparing apples to apples with that. When they go up each year, it consistently increases for four years based upon how their contract is. And right now, their AD stipend for each school, whether that's North Hampton, Hampton Falls, Seabrook, or Southampton, is $5,000 for that. So my goal tonight was just, as I said, you know, I know that it's difficult to get people into things. I know as we have younger teachers coming in, you know, we want to try and incentivize them. Obviously, it's a good program. Obviously, it's great ability to connect with the students. I think those are all important things, but clearly, you know, a financial incentive for these people is there, and I think as somebody who's a manager in what I do, people look around at things when they're going to hire. So my goal tonight was just to give you some awareness to what the apple-to-apple is within that regard. So again, want to thank you for your support for the program. I think we have a great program here. I think the cross-country program's great. I think all of our students, in fact, I know we've added some great programs. You get to see the Unified Team, I think, last time. So I just think maybe it's gather some information. I know, like you said, you gave a great example. I appreciate it. Sometimes it's the last thing looked at. Maybe we just need to give it a little bit so that we keep having good athletic programs to support that. So thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it, and it looks like I have 30 seconds left, so I did pretty well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, do we have anybody else for public comment, since I almost missed Mike? Okay, so we will table the rest of our public comment time until the end of the meeting. And it's time for school board member updates. Does anyone have any updates? Budget committee, maybe? Have they started meeting?
Well, we, we did receive requests to negotiate from C and from SASPA.
That is, that is underway. PTA's a little quiet for the summer. REC is the opposite. They are crazy busy for the summer. Do we have anything else? We did have a policy meeting, so we do have some policies tonight that we'll look at in a little bit for, for first reads. Anything else? All right, Mr. Lannan, come on down.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I want to thank you for another great year, great support from all of you for all of the schools here in Hampton, especially for me as I finish up my last year. So much appreciation from me to you. We did close up a year. We had a very successful closeout to the school year. We got everything accomplished that we needed to do. We're still doing some fine-tuning on hiring. That needs to be finalized a little bit. But other than that, we're looking in good shape. We've had several kindergarten registrations. We'll do another one in the summer as we're starting to collect more interest in coming to kindergarten next year. The numbers are about 78, 79 students entering kindergarten right now for your recording purposes as of now. It is a little lower than past years at this time. I will be honest with you. I just wanted to be upfront and transparent on that. We've had numbers higher in the past. Could be a slow enrollment, or it could be, could be a low enrollment year, or it could be just folks aren't just getting around to enrolling just yet. So that's something that, over the summer, we'll have to monitor, or you guys will have to monitor. We had a couple of great celebrations. I talked about that last time. End-of-the-year parent celebrations were great. The field day was fabulous. We got really lucky on the weather, so that worked out well. Dr. Costa has asked me to, in all the principles, to just give a little bit of an overview as well with some curriculum work we did, which demonstrated success. We partnered with them again this year in language arts and in mathematics. So I just want to give you just a couple of bullets in language arts and a couple of bullets in mathematics to let you know where we are and where we're going, what we've done throughout the year, and where we, where we need to go moving forward into next year. It's different phases. Language arts, we've been working with them a little bit longer, so we're just in the final phases with language arts, but we did have a committee all year. We met at the district level. We also met at the building level. We have a great parity in the group at the district level with two teachers per grade level, with the reading specialists and the reading interventionists, and I served on that committee as well. We explored the question, what does it take to maintain, revise, and sustain an in-house and co-written curriculum, as we're doing that our own here at Center School. We explored ways to document and organize an operational curriculum. We learned about a reflection protocol called unit diary mapping. Each grade level was able to participate in this protocol for their first taught unit of the year, which went great. The process continued throughout the year during our PLC meetings. This allowed us to set out a plan for unit trimester and year-long reflections and revisions as we moved through the new curriculum for the very first time this year. The team then turned their attention towards assessments. We completed an assessment audit, which needed to be done, where we examined the types of end-of-the-year assessments we were giving and what standards these assessments were addressing, K through 2. Remember, we're moving from a Lucy-Cawkin school into a science or reading school, so we, we took the lead on that early in the, early in the state level, and we're starting to see the benefits of that. Teachers also participated in several vertically-aligned conversations so that each grade level could see where the units and teaching fit within the big picture of what we're trying to accomplish at Center School. So again, that's the really critical part, is that you're working in a grade level, but the teachers need to know where they're coming, and the teachers need to know where they're going, so you know what you're receiving. So that's the big part of school, is that teachers don't work in silos, that they don't work alone, silos on their own. Mathematics, again, we had a nice committee. We, this is, Language Arts is a year ahead of mathematics. Mathematics is now, and it's going to be moving forward into next year as we're closing up with Language Arts a little bit, which demonstrated success. The math committee this year consisted, again, just like ELA, two teachers per grade level. Martha, the interventionist, was part of that, and Jamie took the lead in this one as, same at Marston School, as we split it up, one administrator for a committee. We looked at the progression of math learning K through 8. We took a closer look at the math standards, specifically K2, with a focus on understanding the language of each and noticing which standards in priority, supporting, and additional standards. Those priority standards are the ones that are primary focus for us. As a team, we established a series of shared documents on which to record each grade level's scope and sequence of math teaching for the year. We explored vetted, research-based resources, including illustrative math, Bridges, Open Up, and Unbound Ed. Those are just some of the programs we looked at. Teachers worked hard to author a scope and sequence for the grade level to use during the 2024-2025 year, so we're all set, as we're in a transition right now, but we're all set and planned for the 2024-25 year, and it is aligned. We currently have a two-year plan with Marston School, and that is to participate in some vertical math meetings to identify our philosophy of math instruction from a K through 5 level. That's really critical in mathematics. Obtain materials of various vetted programs for review. Do the crosswalk. The teacher authored scope and sequences with those of the vetted programs. There's going to be some visiting of schools who are using said vetted programs for observation and discussion. Very small pilots might be introduced next year. Math piloting that's going on in specific classrooms as we move forward with our exploration in math. And then at the end, there's possible adoption of a math program moving forward several years out. But again, we're in the beginning stages of that. Lots of work. Center School is in a really good place. I wanted you to have that information. As I'm leaving, as the school's moving forward, as new leadership's taking forward, that I believe that we're in a good spot academically at Center School. Again, do you have any questions for me? Any, anything else? Thank you all.
I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work and years of service at Center School.
Thank you so much. Have a great night, everyone.
Hello. I was, I was going to flip him, but I'll just go with the normal board report first. A great end of the year. It was, it was crazy. It was wonderful to be out so early and have the students out so early, but that missing week was like, everything's crunching to two weeks of June instead of three weeks of June. But I still think things ended very well. There was a lot of sad kids, and that's kind of a good sign of a successful year, that they're really going to miss their teachers, and they're ready to move on to next year. So we're just kind of gearing up for the work that needs to be done over the course of the summer and to open the school back up in surprisingly a few months. So questions in general on that part? All right. I'll try to avoid some of the redundancies. We've worked really hard over the years to, you know, not only be in K-8 alignment, but especially K-5 alignment. I'm working closely with Center School on our curricular initiatives. Very similar in English Language Arts. We implemented the scope and sequence that we developed last year, which demonstrated success. But as we went through each unit, we spent time reviewing and refining to make sure they were hitting the standards that we wanted, but also that we were really assessing kids with the depth of knowledge that they're going to see on things like the New Hampshire SAS at the end of the year. You know, we revised our trimester assessments so we'd have common scoring and common ideas. While Marston staff stayed pretty consistent, there's been new people on every single team over the year, so it was nice to bring them in and kind of show them the curricular work that we've done, the scope and sequence that kind of outlines when you should teach this, while still allowing them, you know, to be creative as teachers. But it was also essential, when we looked at our assessments, that all of us were on the same page, giving them the same way in the classroom, administering them, scoring them, and doing all of those things. And we really worked hard this year, not only looking at the curriculum we built last year, but really to make sure our instruction, our assessment, and our reporting were all aligned so that, you know, from what we said we were going to teach was being taught, we're making sure students understand it, evaluating the work the instructors are doing, and then being able to report that out to students and families. And we were able to audit resources to ensure alignment. We developed some new units, but we also changed some things. We had been using some texts that perhaps were a little outdated, some writing prompts that weren't really relevant anymore to kids. So we found that we were pretty resource-rich in ELA, which brings us to the math conversation about, you know, starting to look at programming and additional materials and things like that to support our instructional methods. In ELA, our next steps are really just, you know, fully implementing the new curriculum. I mean, we did it last year. It wasn't a lot of major changes, but there were areas that we certainly had to enhance and edit and really make a little more robust for our students. And we're also taking a small subcommittee to have a continued focus on writing. Obviously, we're looking at reading and writing in combination this year, but where we have transitioned from Lucy-Cawkins, we're trying to be more aligned with what the students are being assessed on at the end of each year. It caused us to take a pause and really look at some of our writing units, so there's a little work to be done in that, that field. In terms of mathematics, as Mr. Lannan said, we're about a year behind ELA, you know, good pace of our curriculum in terms of, you know, realignment and developing, but working on that vertically-aligned math curriculum, again, it's going to be essential, K-5, that we're really on board. If you recall, years ago, we adopted a math program, but because we didn't adopt it district-wide, or at least K-5, a lot ended up falling on our third-grade teachers in terms of, it was new language, new routines, new methods, on top of teaching the standard. So it kind of fell apart. That's why I like the renewed focus Dr. Costa said on keeping us all together with this K-8 alignment, but specifically for us, the K-5. During our math work, you know, seven of our teachers had the opportunity to participate in the NHASCD K-8 math conference in March and then bring that information back to the staff. Part of their work there was also reviewing programs and speaking with other schools about what they're using in terms of math instruction to be successful. And then next year, we're hoping to continue with the conversations between not only our grade-level teachers, but our target-assess math teachers. It was something we used to do all the time, meet regularly, to kind of make sure we're, we're clear on what K2 needs to accomplish in order for 3-5 to be successful for 6-8. So it's just continued work. In terms of ELA, we'll probably be doing it mostly in-house next year. We have some really strong English Language Arts, you know, passionate folks at our school, phenomenal reading specialists and target-assess teacher. So we're going to tap into them as great resources, and then in math, of course, utilizing, you know, administrators or target-assess, but probably a little more support from demonstrated success, so we finish up the curriculum mapping. Questions along those lines? Ready?
Last, in May, we had one of your staff members come and talk about, she felt the need, or the, or some of the teachers at Marston School feel the need for more paras in their classroom. What is going to be done to help the teachers out that need the extra help in their classroom? Have you addressed that or thought of that?
Well, the tricky part is, I guess, for us, is most of our paras are tied to individualized education plans. So we are not really in a position where I have like extra bodies. We try to get creative with not only a pull-out method, but how can we utilize interventionists in the room? So towards the end of the year, we started trying to do a little more with Title I tutors. While they're there for a specific reason, it does lend yourself to having a second adult in the room, but we don't have general classroom aides at Marston, unfortunately. You know, if there's a para in a room, it's pretty much tied to a student and whatever hours they have on their IEP.
If you had your needs, how many general paras could, would you need, would Marston need to help this, the teachers?
I guess I would have to take a harder look right now at which rooms currently have paras and for how long, so I'd hate to throw out a number.
Okay, would you have a number for July?
Sure, yes.
Okay, because obviously, the teachers felt the need to come here.
Sure.
Obviously, they addressed us. Obviously, there's a need, and with children and families and everything else, if we could do some of the need, that would be great, because a lot of times, we concentrate on center or the academy, or we need to know, if you need help, we don't want teachers suffering from burnout and stress and everything, if we can help. So if you could figure out how many paras you might need, we'll see, we can address it as a board.
Okay, you got it. Definitely.
Just want to thank you for all your hard work this year, you and your staff.
Yeah, they were great, great. And Mrs. Henderson, obviously wonderful. The Marston staff's top-notch. We're fortunate. Thank you very much. Enjoy the night.
Okay, so we do not have anybody to present the report this month from Hampton Academy. Anybody has any questions specifically for Dr. Costa? We do have a written report.
Did I see some donation requests for either Center?
Yeah, I thought, let's do them all, all at one time. We've got basically one for each, we've got two or three from each school, so we'll do those all at one time.
Do we have a reason why the administrative staff from the academy isn't here?
One had a conflict, and the other one is out on vacation.
Okay. I've lost track of my paper here. Okay, so, sorry, what are we doing next? Uh, Dr., sorry, Dr. DeSilva-Napp, she's right there. Come on up.
Hello, hello. So you do have my report, and we did some great things this year, actually. We did, got our parent partnership. We did, got our parent partnership project off the ground. We had three really awesome sessions. Our last one was in May. That's a dinner in childcare and information for parents, and we did one at each school. So that was really exciting. And next year, we're going to expand to include SAU 21 in some of our times and possibly look at their building for some other really exciting expansions around early childhood and helping kind of kids connect with little ones, and we'll see where it all goes. So that's growing and very exciting. We also, as you probably know, still have some openings in special education, so just want to put that out there, much like Mr. LaSard. We need a full-time school psychologist. We are still searching for one. If you know of anyone or anybody has any connections, please apply on our Apple tracks. We also are still looking for a case manager at one of our schools at our grades three through five. So those are two full-time openings we are still searching for at this time. And we are also, we do have para openings at all three buildings. So if you are interested at all in coming to work in our schools, please contact me. Also, we did a great, we had a great, great initiative that Dr. Costa started with a little conversation with Mary Ford a few months ago, and we've started a new initiative in our district. We didn't know how many paras would be interested, but 15 paras met one-on-one with Mary Ford over the last two early release days to talk with her about their path toward higher education. So these paras, whoever signs up from those 15, will get a mentor that will be a cohort of paras that are working toward whatever they're working toward, whether it's their associates, their bachelors, their teacher certification. But this is really, really exciting for us, and we're looking forward to the next steps of what that will look like for our district and our paras. It's very, very exciting, so. Oh, and ESOL, we had a great family night last month. It was just amazing. We had 40 or 50 people. It was big, it was awesome. It's an annual event that occurs every year, and that went really well. Numbers, as you can see, just went up, 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 and they are not going to go down. They are continuing to go up. I understand what, and I'm looking into, you know, how many kids are going to turn three next year? It's something that you can, you know, ask the town about, and we've got some, we've got kids coming our way that have needs. It will continue to rise. So we did make it through this year and with our current resources, and we have the new RBT position at Marston, so that's going to be a great help for that building. That'll give them an additional para in addition to their RBT. And we're looking at programming at the Marston level for more specialized programming for students who are coming up through the way. So more to discuss at budget time in the fall about that. Any questions?
I want to throw some numbers out there. I like to do this. You guys all know the numbers, but those who are watching or at home don't know what our actual numbers are, and particularly because we are going to need to talk about the budget. So we began the year with 176 students in our special ed program, and we ended the year with 206, which was an increase of 30 students net over the course of the year, which is a 17% increase. We did not have a 17% increase in staffing.
Thank you. This is true.
When we, when you guys have your retreat over the summer and when you start having your budget meetings, I think we are definitely going to want everyone to take a hard look at what special ed needs in terms of staffing to make the schools and the students and the families successful.
Thank you. That's exactly right. Thank you.
What's your special ed preschool look like right now?
Well, we ended the year with 28
Yep.
in the program and with an additional 15 pre-K, but for next year, we are starting, I did those numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but nearly three-quarters of the way full in every classroom. So they max out at 12, as you know. We have four classrooms, so there is a strong possibility that we may need to do something creative next year with preschool. At the moment, the way we have it staffed, we can make it, but I'm not sure we're going to make it through the whole year, and I just want to put that right out there and thank you because I am very concerned about how we will educate our preschoolers after probably January. It's hard to estimate, but at this point, it may be full to overflowing, and we will have to look at creative things.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
Yep. Thanks.
While you're up here, let's talk about the job description.
Oh, yes, the job description.
Thank you very much for putting that together. I appreciate it.
Sure. So this came up, and I was asked to write a job description, and I did. I just thought about the needs and what we would need, and there are many school districts that have kind of a buffer between the director and the buildings. In this school district, we have the special ed teachers and then me, and the principals are in between. But many times, there are building coordinators or somebody at the building level that can help coordinate special ed and LEA some of those meetings, especially assisting me with out-of-district placements. That is quite time-consuming when I'm going to those meetings and doing all the paperwork that comes along with that. So this was a brainstorm and a wish, and I would say it could be funded much like a teacher, if you wanted to call it a position, a halftime position, or however you would do the math, but I think monetarily, that would, that would work as a kind of a LEA in-district, out-of-district coordinator, however, whatever you want to name it. But I think that that would be, that'd be definitely helpful.
I can't see the look she's giving me. So do we, so obviously, this is something that isn't in the budget for next year.
It is not in the budget for next year.
Do we think we have a way to fund it until it could actually be added to the budget officially?
I would have to see who has left for employees and what we put in for rates for those employees to see how much of a difference. And calculate a couple people for retirement because that's what covers our retirement, and then see if there's any funds left over. I think that's what we'd, would be able to utilize it as of now because we don't know what other items we can pull from in that budget yet.
While you're looking at that, could you also look at how many para professionals we might be able to add to schools? Without, you know, without blowing your budget totally, just look at us so if we find out we could use.
So our IDA grant has gone down by 20?
Twenty, yeah.
About 20,000, and that's what covers some of our paras. So we're going to have to, I'm definitely going to have to look at some of the items.
And we can have positions, but we so far haven't filled all the positions we have.
Right.
Some people might be interested in a para professional that works in a classroom rather than with special needs students. And if we did that, maybe we could attract a different, even if we did it part-time in the classroom.
So we're going to have to look at this very carefully. Right now, unless I'm misunderstanding, we only have general classroom aides in kindergarten?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So then, do we also have them in first grade and second grade? We can't really add them in third, fourth and fifth and not add them in first grade and second grade? And that's a lot, so that's what, six times five? They're looking at adding 30 employees?
We're not looking at, we're looking at addressing a concern that was brought up to us.
Oh, 100%. I'm just saying adding.
If we attach, attack one school.
Yep.
Settle that.
Yep.
Then we can move to the other two.
But what was the real, like?
The real deal is some of the teachers.
So we have to, like, they came with a complaint, but what was that complaint really about? Like, is it really about because they are doing too many things in their classrooms? Do they need help? Are they, are there, what is, what is the issue? Like, we should address what the issue is before we put money to that issue.
I would say, I would think we would want to look at the needs and then go from there. I think it would be the high-needs, high-needs classrooms, but please, Les, I'm sure you have some words of wisdom.
I would just echo what I think we, Ginny and I said at the last meeting, we need to be very careful about adding unbudgeted positions.
Absolutely.
I think, I think the increase in para is valid, and we need to make a hard, take a hard look at that
Yep.
at budget time as, as is this, but we just need to be careful.
And maybe that's what this is really in preparation for is
Correct.
in September and October, we can have a much more realistic budget meetings
Exactly, yes.
than we have in late, later, earlier.
Yep, agreed.
So I just wanted to add that, you know, that's a, it's, it's quite a philosophical shift to shift from just special education aides into, you know, expanding our regular education aides and for what reason and why, and making sure that they're all used effectively and efficiently.
So back to the part-time position. I would guess you would need to work with Mariah to potentially come up with a salary, right? We don't have any idea. And then take a look at whether we can squeeze out funding for it, because that's Mariah's job, still squeezing.
Okay, just for clarification, were you just referring to paras?
No.
Or this?
This part-time position that we have been discussing, yes, not the paras.
Maybe I wasn't clear when I said it before. Even if we could find the money.
Yep.
I would be very careful
Yes.
about implementing that. Ginny's nodding because I think she knows.
Yep.
Are you doing budget committee this year?
I am.
That's why she knows she's going to have to answer.
Yeah. And that's fine. It may be that this is something that we put in, put into our budget request for next year, but Lois is bringing this to us because we have, on several occasions, asked her what she needs, and this is her wish list.
Right.
And she's bringing it to us. She did not come to us and say, please, I need this. We said,
That's correct.
please bring this to us. So just on Lois's behalf.
And I think the timing is good.
Yes.
Because as we all know,
Yep.
within weeks, we'll be starting to prepare the next budget.
Correct, absolutely. And so I'm completely fine. There's obviously, I think this is a great blueprint. I don't think we're ready to do anything officially with it.
And the other thing I would ask that you think about to your point is what would be the criteria for adding a general para in a classroom? So we would want to have some clear criteria around that. But again, I think your point is well-taken, Les. I remember last year, Mariah, we were, it was a pretty slim margin in terms of how we ended last year, if memory serves me correctly. And I know you're still tossing numbers around to see where we land.
We'll talk about that on my piece, but yeah.
I also think it's very important to say, to find this position as how it affects kids, and because people don't look at another admin position. They view it a lot different than adding a teacher that's going to help. Yeah, and this helps kids, but we just have to figure out
Show how.
how we can, you know, explain it. That's, that's the main purpose.
So we'll keep talking, we'll keep talking about it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Levine?
So we've been very busy in our department. It's the end of the season, so end of the year, which means a lot of events going on. We've had concerts and eighth grade final assembly, fifth grade final assembly. We've also been inventorying Chromebooks across the district, teacher devices, student devices. Hampton Academy is getting new Chromebooks this year. They're on their three-year cycle, so we did an RFP for that, and we got some bids back, which was great, and we're moving forward on that. We're also reviewing all of our subscriptions district-wide, working with admin on that. We've just been working on setting up and distributing report cards for the end of the year. Everybody should have gotten those already. Also managing end-of-the-year reports for Alma and the state. Tim Smith's been working on that. We also finalized our data governance plan, which has been exciting, and we've been working on that all year. That is in the hands of Dr. Costa and the SAU. We haven't gone over it as a leadership team yet. That was part of a year-long cohort that I was part of across the country with educators and tech directors from east coast to west coast and working with some organizations with cybersecurity. We're going to continue responding on everything, even throughout the summer. Summer school is here this summer. We are getting Chromebooks ready for our summer school students, making sure classrooms are set up, Promethean boards are ready to go, and then updating all SAU 90 forms for the following school year. At the bottom of the report, it's just kind of a shift of tech responsibilities for next year because I'll be moving my office upstairs instead of downstairs. I've got a great team of guys, Dave Hansbury, Nick Giaruso and Tim Smith, who are ready for the challenge for next year, and I know they'll do great things. So I'm just really, really thankful for my team down here, and I couldn't do everything without those guys, so big congrats for them. But they're in good hands, and I won't be that far away, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. LaSard? I know. You should sit in the front instead of trying to hide in the back.
I'm in everybody's sight, I'm afraid. Or is that a good thing? Anyways, good evening, happy summer in a couple days. I was reminded on the way up to let everybody know that we're still looking for summer hires. We do have a few. We'd like to get a few more. Other than that, we've, we're fully staffed for 13 more days, and then we'll be looking for another full-time custodian. We have started our projects, are preparing for our projects. It's been very, very busy last month. I'd like to thank everybody in the buildings for their patience with me and my staff as we prepare for. I was told to repeat what we're doing this summer, summer projects. We have our boiler at Marston. We're working on indoor air quality at Marston. We are doing the security entrance at Marston. Then we go over to Hampton Center School, and we're doing the asbestos abatement. We are putting up a new acoustical tile and lighting program in all the rooms we're doing the asbestos abatement in, and we are installing the preschool playground. With that said, we'll still be cleaning the buildings and doing the best we can. And I just want to thank my staff, who was absolutely wonderful this year, stepping up to the plate and covering for our times that we were short on staff. Look forward to getting through the summer and having a good time at the school district this summer. I will offer myself up for any questions.
I have a question. So I got a call from a parent.
About the trees.
About the trees, yes.
Yes.
So for those who were talking shorthand, I had a parent who called and asked, we, we did have one, I think, large
Yes, a damaged tree at Center School.
That was damaged, that had to come down.
Right.
And the parent was concerned essentially about the lack of shade available for children when they are outside on the Center School playground. Even if we planted a bunch of trees tomorrow, that still would not necessarily provide a lot of shade when, when they're back in the fall. So do we, I know you're putting in new playground equipment. Is it possible maybe to add any kind of structures that provide shade? Or, I don't know, I just.
Those are, that's a very good question, and maybe we could do a sidebar on that.
Of course.
But I will tell you, Dr. Silva Napkin, who we call LDK for short.
Way in the back, all the way in the back.
We tried to talk about shade for the new preschool, and it was quite expensive. We tried to talk about shade for the new preschool, and it was quite expensive. I guess that's what I'm looking for her to tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus, it requires putting up and taking down when it starts to get snowy, and then putting it back up in the spring. We were looking for one small piece, and it was well over $7,000. Yeah, so the whole thing with trees, I love trees. I'm very green, as you probably all know, that trees makes oxygen, and I love oxygen. But we also had to remove those trees because they were a danger. So it's, it's a real mixed bag, having trees, but I'm for planting some trees. I'm all for that. I hadn't gotten an opportunity to reach out to that person. I apologize for that, but I've just, I have been busy.
That's okay. Not a, not a complaint. You have a lot going on. It's just, you're right there, so I can ask you.
The state of New Hampshire requires all licensed daycare centers and preschool centers to have shade, some shade on their playground. But do they not have that same requirement for public school?
I have not heard of one for public schools.
Okay, so it's only in licensed centers and playgrounds, huh?
Yeah. Well, we do have some shade. We have less shade now the tree came down.
Well, you can maximize on the sum, I guess.
Yeah. No, I, I don't know what we can do. I, I, I struggle with the bubble for every child, and trying to make everybody safe, and make it safe for everybody. It's up to the board what they want to do for, you know, maybe we need to study that to find out how much money, and if we need to put it in a Warren article, how many additional hours it's going to take to put up and put down, and how is it maintained? We were kind of discouraged a little bit from the, the playground installer had one of the most creative playground. You know, because of all the additional work and the maintenance is required, and we try to watch our money that way, I, I, I really, I don't have an answer. I don't have an answer. We brought up the topic of shade. We talked about it, and we came back and heard how much it would cost in removing and installing. And then there were some things that we could get that were like, on the side, that swung over and was on the playground. I, I.
It was, when we were looking at it, wasn't there a, it was like a shade tree thing that came up and had the covers, but we'd have to take it down during the winter because the snow would destroy it and.
But it's $7,000?
It was, it was more than that, I think. I want to, it was, wasn't it? It was like, 15, 18?
Any structure like that.
Oh, is it expensive? I know, yeah. But, how about if we just throw it out there, that if anyone is interested in donating or getting involved in raising money for shade, that they could get ahold of you or Lois? Also, maybe the PTA, because they have some funds that, they have a lot of funds at the moment, so maybe they could contribute.
Sort of. So I'm going to, I'll make a PTA comment, which is, they, they essentially, they, so number one, they made, I think, a very generous donation.
$50,000.
To the, to the preschool.
Oh, did they?
Playground. And they actually worked really hard to spend almost all of their money. But they are going to have another week at The Brook coming up in July, so, I mean, it may be that this is something we, you know, obviously aren't going to have in place by, by September, but that's okay. Maybe it's something we can look at going forward, look at alternate sources of funding, see if it's something the PTA can help with, Girl Scouts can fundraise for, whatever, so.
Do we know what date the PTA is going to be at The Brook? If you can make a public service announcement, so we get people there to participate.
No, but I will, I will, at some point while we were sitting here, looking it up on my phone and announce it before we're done.
So.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And I, whatever we want to do, just let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good one. One last thing, I'd like to put a shout out to Steve Paul for being a wonderful custodian for over 27 years here in the Hampton School District. Happy Fourth of July.
Thanks. Come down, Ms. Borg.
Happy June, everyone. Lord knows I had a long year, and I'm glad it's over. With that being said, so we ended up with children, students, bad debt, $3,300. And yesterday, I sent out self-addressed stamped envelopes with the invoices in them, so I'm going to still pursue trying to get that $3,300 in. And I'll do that when I get back from my vacation again in August. So, any questions?
So, you did some training on your software, right?
With Mosaic.
With Mosaic.
Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about. I've been training all year, every day. Yeah, we're, we're good.
Awesome. So I just wanted to check in, because I know, you know, you, some of your staff are leaving, and I know some of them helped a lot with, you know, running or not running. I don't know what exactly they did.
Yeah, so we have back of the house, up and running, did training, so it will, like, got September's menu, just finished it yesterday, and it's cost-specific. And so I have those numbers, but that's it, yeah, so.
And working through SafeServe to ensure that we're following all federal guidelines with that, too. We made sure that staff was aware and had them sign off on that, so that we just had those for our records and files.
Sure.
So just all the important things that we had talked about previously.
Save, serve food safe for our kids. Which we do.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, quick question. Have you or your staff, or Lois, for that matter, received any feedback on the proposed, well, not proposed, but the price increases?
Not, I have not.
Not yet.
So.
The proof will be with what happens with our numbers, right? For sure?
Have a nice summer, everyone.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
You too. Dr. Costa?
Okay, do you want to do those approvals for those checks as we go through, just as we're going? All right, so, starting on page six, for Center School, we have $550, which is coming from the PTA.
Motion to accept that?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Okay, and also, in the Marston School, we have a check for $39.80 for Box Tops for Education.
Motion to accept that?
All in favor?
Okay, and Hampton Academy, a check from Box Tops for one for $90 and one for $36, so two checks.
We've got, so the 90 was, Got Sneakers, I think, which was the fundraiser that they had this year.
Yeah, thank you.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
He's saying, is your mic on? That's okay. I'll second that one. All in favor?
All right, thank you. Those are all approved. I want to just take a moment to thank Colleen Poison for her years of service with our board and doing our meeting minutes. We really appreciate her attention to those details and getting those to us in a timely fashion. We certainly have appreciated her willingness to help us out with that, but her family is expanding, and we're so happy for her. So she has asked that she be relieved of her duties, which we, we do so. And fortunately, Danny Albright, who is our new accounts payroll person who works alongside Mariah in our office, has volunteered to assist us with those minutes. So, we have Danny, who's going to do those. Is that, so, just to let you know that, so, best wishes to Colleen on her expanding family and the Warburtons, and then, of course, welcome to Danny. And she'll do those from home, and she'll get us, get those to us in a timely fashion. At this time, we are obviously busy with the hiring. We have some late resignations that we'll talk about shortly, and then we have some positions that we're trying to fill. At this time, we do have at least one position, professional staff at Center, one professional staff at Marston, and one professional staff at Hampton Academy that we need to fill, along with some paraeducators. So, we're, we're busy doing that. We had some great end-of-the-year assemblies, which I know that you're all aware of, including Winnetconic graduation, and five of our Hampton students were in the top 10, which I will be sending letters out on your behalf, and we'll sign those letters with our congratulations to those Winnetconic grads for their success. So, great to be a part of that. We will have, Mr. Schrak is a Teacher of the Year finalist, and also incoming technology educator at Hampton Academy. Mr. Gray is also a Teacher of the Year finalist, so we're, we're delighted with that news, and we wish them well as they continue on in the process. We'll keep you posted in terms of what that looks like. Mariah and I are in touch with Mrs. Anne Marie Galanos from the Towns Budget Committee, and we're looking forward to meeting with her in the weeks ahead. She did reach out to us regarding budget, in preparation for the budget. We are going to probably do a tour of our facilities with Keith Lassard to have a good understanding of our facility's needs. So we'll do that probably in late summer, early fall, but just to know that we are in touch with her regarding that. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about CNSESPA negotiations, which you have those letters with our intent to negotiate. We look forward to do that, which will come shortly, but in the fall. And then, moving forward, you can see that under our safety goal, we, as Mrs., our Dr. Lois DeSilver-Napton pointed out, we had our third family night, which was focused on resilience in children, which was a wonderful evening. The fact that we are able to provide dinner and childcare is really a wonderful thing for our families, and we received lots of positive compliments about that. You know that we're very, very busy with summer projects at both Center and at Marston, which means that all of our extended summer year will be at Hampton Academy, so that will keep all three schools pretty busy this summer with all of the projects that Mr. Lassard has going on, along with extended school year. So that will be happening. And then, you can see that the hours for the extended year are there for you. We are looking forward to reviewing our New Hampshire SAS data. That should be coming out shortly. It was a little bit delayed due to the ELA was hand-scored because of the writing assessment, so we should have that shortly. We hope to do a presentation, as we have in the past, probably in August, for your review. And then, of course, our building principals are working with their staff on summer proposals around curriculum work that they want to get done. And then, Mariah and I will be attending the New Hampshire School Administrators Association Annual Conference, which will be next week, where we'll be learning more about some of the issues around student learning legislation and safety, so we're looking forward to that. And I would say that all in all, like Nathan Sadler has said, it was a fast June, a lot faster than it's typically been. It was, you know, a light winter in terms of just one snow day in April, which allowed our students to finish last Wednesday and our staff to finish last Friday. Next week, we are going to host Camp Invention, that will be at Marston School. We fortunately have Mrs. Elwood from Center School that has stepped up to the plate to be the assistant director, so we're really happy about that. So we'll have about 100 campers that'll be here. That's always an off, that's an offering that's well-received in our community, and I look forward to going over there and meeting with Andrew Fals, who is in charge of the programming, and just welcoming all those kids and taking a peek at what they're doing. So, we look forward to that. And I've also attached, just for your review, a copy, a draft copy of our Leadership Retreat, which will be July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. It was, we were challenged to find dates that were going to work for all of us, and those are the three dates. So we look forward to getting together at the Cary Cottage House up in Portsmouth, and focusing specifically on how school climate and staff culture impact student achievement. And you can get a sense of some of the pieces of that. So obviously, we welcome any of your feedback that you may have, but you can get a sense of the kinds of things that we're going to be talking about. And that's.
So our new administrators are going to hit the, hit the ground running.
We are going to hit the ground running. They start on July 1, and we'll, we'll do that then. And then, of course, the rest of July will be busy with summer programming, and then we have, of course, believe it or not, August 16 is when new staff report. So you can see that they've got a couple weeks in August to take a little vacation without students in our buildings, and then we will, we'll hit the ground running early in August. Any questions for my report?
Keith snuck out, but the PTA will be at The Brook from July 25th through July 29th, so please go and support our PTA.
Thank you.
Yes, July 25th through July 29th.
We can do it all, we can post it on Facebook, yeah, we can, yep.
Yep, we have, I think at this point, I looked, and they have not yet shared it on their Facebook page, so I think once that's available, then, then the school can share it. They do, and I believe it's going to be a comedy show? And usually, that's on the first night, so I don't have the details on that, I checked, but probably the 25th, and I believe it's a comedy show. Yep, yep, so as soon as they kind of release that information, we can share that up. So, gone through all of our reports, schedules 24, 25?
Those are attached for your review and consideration?
Have.
Those are in, they're in with the reports, the principal's reports and.
Oh, I see.
And I carried Hampton Academy.
The daily, the daily schedule.
Exactly. It's a master schedule for your review. I know it's just something you like to take a peek at.
Yep.
And then we thought it was important, just to give you some of those summer updates that Ms. Lassard talked about with regard to the many summer projects, and just with what's going on with our extended year in Camp Invention, just for your, for your information.
Perfect. Mrs. Curtis, you ready?
Yes, I am. So, I guess I'm going to start with my budget. So, when I was doing my report at the beginning of the month, I figured that my estimate, my surplus would be about $150,000. That's all the revenue from the CAT AIDS, fed aid that I had, that I had requested if we were going to go over special ed, we could utilize those revenues to cover it. However, a couple of months ago, probably around December, January, Lois and I were trying to figure out how we were going to handle the, the huge overage in special ed. And what we did is, we adjusted our ESAR fund grant and changed some of the line items and manipulated it on items that we hadn't used, the money that we hadn't encumbered yet for that grant, and put in about $375,000 in that grant for special ed, so transportation and services. So, now that I am closer to the end of June, when I start doing my, we just finished our last payroll, so with me adjusting my withholdings and more getting into the nooks and crannies of my budget, and encumbering all the, the Warren articles that Keith and I have been working together for days on, I have about $425,000 now not encumbered. So if I didn't move those special ed funds out, we probably would have been zero, right? So now I have those funds, and I would like to ask if I could have you guys vote to utilize $130,000 of that for the lighting and tiles at Center. We had all the funding for the asbestos organized, but the lighting and tiles we didn't have, and we're going to put them in the Warren article for next year if we couldn't, if we didn't have funds this year. But it wasn't what we wanted to utilize for those services. So since I have some funds that we have not utilized yet, I would like to take $130 of it and pay for the lighting and tiles at Center School with those funds. I also have not finished adjusting Manjoo's grants, so now that payroll's completed, I can take all of the salaries that we have for special ed that we pay out of, and take the FICA that we have in our fund balance and put it to the grant and get refunded back. So that is a guest amount, about $25,000 that we'll have to spend, too. The, we have pretty much everything encumbered, the few things. The, we have pretty much everything encumbered. The few things that we don't have encumbered in that 425 is some cleaning supplies and a few other small items that I believe Keith needed to get, that he's been holding off on to see where our funds would land. So even if I utilize that 425 for some of these items, I will have all my revenues as a surplus, which is about 155, 275. And on top of that, we still have the retainage from last year that we can hold, that 5%. So next month, when it gets cleaner, I will come to you saying, this is the surplus from last year, this is our fund balance from this year. And then, you guys can vote to see what you want to retain this year and what you would like to return to offset taxes. But prior to that, I was hoping that we could utilize the 130 for the lighting and tiles.
Just a question on that before I make a motion. Is that something that we could get done this summer?
Yes. Yeah, it has to be done because they're pulling it out, they're pulling asbestos out. We won't have any tiles, and the wires will just be hanging. So we really want at least get the, we'd like to do both because if we just do the lighting, then there's no tiles, and they're just hanging. And so we'd really like to just get it done.
I would make a motion to use, was it 130,000?
Yep.
For that project. That's the tile and ceiling.
Tile and ceiling, yep.
At?
Center School.
Center School.
Does anybody have any questions? Any discussion before we vote?
So with that said, that still would give me a little bit of funds to adjust. And since I adjusted so much of special ed into the grant, if the coverage of the playground is that big of an issue, if I can fund some of that with some of my fund balance, is that something you guys are interested in doing before I close my numbers?
Why don't you hold off?
Because that would be, because we already have an RFP for the playground. They already have all the, they're going to be doing it anyway. So if I threw in one of those trees for like 18, it still would give us, we'd still have a fund balance. I don't think it would affect us that much, especially since I'm going to be adjusting about 25 out of the grant back, out of our fund balance into the grant that will get funded back. It's just a thought.
Yeah.
We're going to do it, might do it all at once.
Yes.
How about one motion at a time?
One motion at a time.
Yeah.
So let's finish. Do I have a, did anybody second? Oh, Jenny second. All right, okay. So, all in favor of the 130,000 for the tiles and the lighting? Okay. Go ahead, Jenny.
Are you sure it's 18,000?
I, yes. I think I'm over-exaggerating. I don't think it was that much, but it was, when we were looking at it, we're like, eh, that's a lot of, we don't, do we need it? Do we not need it? It was gonna, we didn't know what it was going to be to maintain it. It was a little wonky. But what it is, is it's a, it almost looks like a tree. It's a pipe structure, and then it's got like wings that come out that give you shade. And they, it's like, almost like a Jeep top, you know? And they clip in like that.
Yep.
And what would the cost be?
My, my, my guesstimate, if I remember, it's probably a little bit less, but 18,000.
And you need to know tonight?
I don't need to know tonight, but if we were going to do it, I have to close my budget for the end of June.
So we do have to know?
Yeah.
Wait until next year?
Or we wait until next year. But I think I'm going to have some extra funds. And if that's something everybody's so interested in doing, we might want to put it in this year, since they're doing the playground this year, anyway.
So just, so none of this money can go toward all of these power things that we've been talking about?
That's for next year.
And you can't roll anything over?
Nope.
And we will be returning money to the town. We're going to wait.
We'll wait, and I'll give you a
And we'll get a final number.
And then, so you'll get my, like, closing numbers and whatever that's not audited, which will be close. I think last year, I was maybe $20 different than the auditors. The auditors come in, they audit, but they do GASB. They don't do fiscal because they have to do GASB. So they come in and they adjust it their way. Give me a number. That's what will go on my DWE 25. But you guys will vote on a number, what you want maintained and are holding, what we return.
I'm not against the concept particularly, but it's, it's hard to spend 20,000. Is that what you were asking, 20-ish?
Yeah. It was ish, yeah.
On, on something that I haven't seen, and then all of a sudden, it's kind of a monstrosity. And people go, what? You spent 20,000? That's my concern.
Right. Well, that's kind of why we took it off. But if people are so concerned about the shading, that's cheaper than the trees and the
The building is very flat, right? The building provides very little shade. We don't kind of have any little. So I guess my, so two things. I don't actually have a strong opinion about it, I will say. I don't have any idea what the, what anything at the playground is going to look at.
We did have this item on the RFP when we had them come and do the playground. We did have the item on there. But it was not, there was, we cut a lot of things on that to fit into our budget, and that was one of them. Because at the time, we had a set amount of money.
So the company that puts the playground in typically can install this?
Oh, they install, yeah.
Okay. It's not an add-on?
No. No, no.
Would it be more advantageous to buy, like, one of the tents that we were going to rent for eighth grade graduation, which we didn't?
Oh, so get a tent that we permanently have it for eighth grade graduation?
And any other outdoor?
That's a good
And any other outdoor things?
The issue with those tents is it's not just about the tent. It's the insurance required to put it up and to ensure that they are, that they're secure. That's the big thing around those tents.
I'd have to look into Primex and what our insurance would charge us for that. But I know during COVID, all the schools bought tents.
Yes.
We were one of the ones that didn't. So
I would be uncomfortable allocating the money to buy a tent without Keith here to talk about it. Because Keith would be responsible for putting it up and maintaining it and storing it, which is its own issue, because it's quite large. And I just, I would hate to give him something that
Well, maybe not that large a tent. Maybe something more in the line of a canopy.
I would just hate to give him something he hasn't asked for.
I think they sometimes refer to those in areas like Tuckfield Center as attractive nuisances.
Mm-hmm.
When people are out and about and there's nobody around and, you know, I would want to be careful with that.
I agree.
But I don't have a problem going with the add-on to the current playground, because that's basically what it is.
Yeah.
In fact, I would make that motion, that we use up to $20,000 to, and I don't know how to describe the add-on, other than the add-on to the playground.
Shading.
Shading, to provide shading for the playground.
I'm stuck in that. But this add-on structure, shading is going in the special needs preschool playground. Can that be accessed by other children that are on the playground?
Microphone.
Oh, thanks, Nick.
I know that there is, it's fenced, but I don't think it's, I am not sure if it's fenced in like a square. I think it's just fenced in
It's on the left side.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just don't want to vote for something that's only a special group can use when the question was posed by a center school parent.
Right. Well, the reason, the main reason they had that originally was because of the needs of the students that were using that. And like I said, there was probably about 10 items we took off the list from our original wants, and that was one of them. I don't know, I don't know if our playground's big enough to have two, honestly.
To have two what, trees?
Two trees.
But we wouldn't do the two trees because you're only doing one for 20,000.
Yeah. And I mean, I guess we'd have to figure out where it would be placed, if it's close to a spot where others can get to it. I'm not.
I was not ignoring you guys. I was texting Dr. DeSilva-Naptin. We'll see if we hear back from her, because I think she'll be a little easier to get on text than Keith, to see if, about the access to it.
Yeah. I mean, if it's accessed by everyone or it hangs over, then that would be fine.
Right.
I don't know that she's available, and we'll reply back right away, but it seemed like it was worth a try.
I would love to defer this, but I don't think we can.
Right.
We want to maybe defer it for a period of ti, like
Tonight?
Tonight.
Okay.
And we'll see if we hear back from her. And if not, we will have to
I would withdraw my motion then.
Yeah. And the only reason why I was suggesting it is because we did manipulate, most of the funds were special ed funds that we manipulated this year to, into the grants. So it would kind of make sense to utilize that money as for special ed.
I just don't want to put up a shade treaty thing and then have kids try to use it, and somebody say, you can't use it.
Right.
And then we're in a
But I mean, at a minimum, I would think that having shade for our special needs preschool students would be important.
As I said, every state licensed childcare and preschool has to have shaded areas.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking, once you said that, I'm like, well, makes sense, like, yeah.
Yeah, because you do, especially where it's hot.
Yeah. I'd still like to throw out the idea of purchasing, like, a canopy tent, like they use, like the sports teams use, and, and perhaps being able to get more for our money with having, like, again, they're not that hard to take down and put up. But having, like, a canopy over there, and even for our money, we might be able to get, like, a Hampton Academy canopy type thing that sports teams or field day groups could use, and maybe one for Marsden and one for Center. Again, I was just thinking, for that amount of money, perhaps we could find something that is a little more multipurpose.
And maybe what we should do is have the motion to make $20,000, donate $20,000 of that to solve the shade problem at the schools.
Yeah, I would, I'm going to see if I can find that
I just, that makes it a little big.
Tree for you.
We're going to wait. Lois has also reached out to Keith, so
Okay.
We're going to, we're deferring that motion.
Yep.
Put a pin in that for a couple of minutes.
I hear back.
When it's time, we'll revisit it, and then if Andrew wants to make a motion, we can do that at the same time and talk about all of it. Everybody sounds good? Okay. So, we were, that was right in the middle of Mariah's report. We derailed it a little bit.
That's okay.
Okay. So
So, yeah. So that's my budget so far going on. I gave you the TD Card expense report for the year. That is used mostly for food service when they run out of bread and items and just need to run to, like, Hannah Firds or BJ's. It's also for gas, gas for keys of vehicles, some travel if we can't use a PO. And it's, it looks like it's used a lot, but it's really not, it's just used for those items. It's really not crazy, which is nice. And then, I gave you the revenue report that is enclosed. Like I said, I think will be about 155, 275-ish. And that's, used to be called CAT-aid, it's called SPECT-aid now. Funds interest on the bank statement and Medicaid is, mostly is making up those revenues. And then, the food service, I gave you the final numbers for May. We have a fund balance still for that program, so we won't use, need to utilize any of the district's fund balance to cover that. I still have to get with Mary to, we, our fund balance does have to care, cover the bad debt for the year and has to cover any funds that are going over to Winnicottet. So I still have to work on that piece before the end of the month. But we'll get a closer final number for food service. And then, the federal grant summary for May, like I said, May's numbers weren't reported in that, and June's will be reported. So I have two months that I need to report for grants, and then we'll be caught up on that. But other than that, it's, right now, two weeks of trying to go through every single purchase order, go through every single account, and clean up absolutely everything I possibly can to get all my numbers finalized for the end of the, end of the month.
Does anybody have any questions from Mariah?
The school board's job is to make sure that the budget isn't overspent. How did the school board's budget line get overspent by $13,136?
I'd have to look at that. But I know that we have put John Gilfoyle's been in there, and then we had almost $3,000
What we spent?
For, I had to pay twice for
4,000, 5,000 on legal, 6,57 on audit.
Yep.
Um
And then, there should be supplies.
Supplies, about 3,200.
Yes. So I can give you a breakdown, but we've had, like, the voting tickets, we had to pay twice on those.
Oh, that's a good
Yes. Like, some of those things come out of that.
Okay.
Um
Okay.
Yep.
And legal, legal is all of the legal for the school or combined school?
No.
What is that?
So most of that legal has to do with, we did have one legal thing with the board that the board asked to do.
Okay.
So that was in there. Most of our legal, we have a legal line in. And then, special ed has a legal line. So we have three legal lines.
Okay.
But I can give you a full-out breakdown, line by line, on all
No, you don't have to do that.
But I do know that we had John Gilfoyle in at one point into the school board lines, who is the person that advertises, like, if we have to have them do something in the newspaper or report stuff for us.
He's like our PR.
A PR person. And I think this year, we actually changed the line, and I have to, not this year, but for next year, moved it because it didn't make sense to put it there. So I have to look at that.
Question. When, when do the auditors come in?
So they come in, they're coming in the last week of July.
So we haven't had any auditors in recently?
Well, yes, I did. They started the first week of June. So they came in the first week of June. They come in, and we go through our processes and some of the policies, and they start pulling some of my check numbers. So when they come back, because I have to pull, like, over 150 invoices for them.
Is that, is that the norm?
Yeah, it takes a week for the audit, and I usually have five to six people at once asking me questions. It's, it's intense. Yep.
Is that plot sick and?
Yeah. Like, they're really thorough. They're great. Their goal, their, their mission is to find, find something, right? That's their mission. But we work really hard to not let them find a thing.
If we want to revisit, I did get a note back from Dr. DeSilva-Naptin about access to the preschool playground, and she says yes with supervision.
Yes, with supervision.
So it's not just open up, but they, as long as there are people out there, yes, they can access it?
Okay.
Yep. Visit the, Les' motion.
Yes.
$20,000.
Yes.
Oh, he's saying, microphone.
Move the amount of $20,000 to add to the preschool or playground equipment for shade purposes. Well, I'd like to keep my motion the way it is, and you voted up or down? Well, I'd like to keep my motion the way it is, and you voted up or down, and go from there.
Second.
Jenny's the second. Do we have any more questions or discussion about Les' motion?
If you want to speak against it, now's the time.
I'm not speaking, well, I guess I am, I am speaking against. I would like, in lieu of having that money spent on just one location, I would like to have it, I would like to have you, maybe Mariah, since you'd be spending the money on our behalf, look into some alternatives that may be able to give some possibilities, as I suggested, like, the tent things that sports teams take, that are easily put up, taken down, that could be maybe for the same price, get something for each school.
For each playground, you mean, right?
Yeah.
Shading options for both.
Pop-ups are very affordable, and I believe the schools have some of them already.
But what would that, like, so, just for purposes of, like, what if they fly over this, like, that's the only question I have, where this thing is actually cemented in the ground, and it's permanent, and doesn't move.
You still have to maintain those playgrounds, though.
Yes, any playground is maintained, yes.
Could you get some trees for $20,000, I mean, even?
We could, but how long until those trees provide a shade?
Well, I mean, it just depends on what size trees you get, and, you know, I gotta believe that you can get some fast-growing kinds of trees that could eventually, I'm sure you would know as a husband who's involved in this, at least you could get the research, maybe it's worth exploring options.
Well, I agree, except we're under a time crunch.
Yeah, I think we should get this for the special ed playground, and then, and I think it is a good idea, I mean, we do need some trees around, but just like anything, those have to be maintained, too.
Yep, Keith mentioned discussing that as a sidebar, one of the things, the parent that spoke to me about it originally, suggested is maybe the PTA could help fund, you know, planting trees, and, but, yeah, I think that's definitely, Keith asked, it sounds like, when Keith and Mariah asked for the estimate in the RFP, they included this piece, so it is something he was at least interested in at that point, he has not asked us for money to plant trees. So, sort of in lieu of him being here, and I think we can come up with money to plant trees, but I think that's not, that's a much more, much more minor amount of money. If he wants to, we can discuss that. That's my, that is my thought on it, I would hate to see our little preschoolers out there, kind of out in the blazing hot sun, hiding under, hiding under the.
Especially with the regulations that you, especially with the regulations that you're speaking of, Jenny, I think it would be important for us to do that.
Well.
Are we ready to call the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mariah. So, we did have a couple of questions for Mariah, and I don't know, Andrea, do you want to ask, do you want me to ask? So, there were apparently some concerns about some issues with teacher paychecks.
Was there an issue with some paychecks recently that were issued, that bounced or did not get through, or maybe some coaches' checks that didn't come through correctly?
There were 10 longevity, there were second run checks, that most of our checks for payroll are all direct deposit, so, any second run checks, longevity, coaches, whatever, is a second run payroll, and those are all check-related, so, they have to, any checks through TD Bank have to be vetted under positive pay and approved through the school, saying, yes, we approve these checks because of fraud. So, whatever happened with TD Bank, they, out of the 60-something checks that we caught, their system took 10 of our checks and said they were fraudulent, so they returned them back, so I had to stop payment and reissue checks the very next day to cover that issue. It doesn't happen often, but it is just a computer glitch that sometimes happens, I, believe me, it was just as much of a hassle for me as it was the employee.
And I just want to make sure going forward, if we haven't done it, that we make sure we issue contracts for any of the stipend positions, I just want to make sure that we double-check on that.
So, I try to do that at the beginning of every year, this year was a fiasco, I did not get the list, the list was revised and nobody told me, I actually paid somebody that was originally on the list, that did not actually work, because they didn't tell me that it was updated, they were positions that were split, that they didn't tell me, so the funds weren't split, so, my crystal ball was not working this year, unfortunately.
Do you have to do it right from the beginning of the year?
They're supposed to have those posted for people to apply, right? And then they were, they're to apply, and then they're supposed to come to me, and then, as soon as I get that, I give out contracts, and if there are positions that are missing, I can't give out a contract, and so, that's where it gets, they give me a couple, then they forget to give them to me, and then it comes to the.
Let me just go back just a little bit, we have different stipend positions at different schools, the majority of them, obviously.
Are at the academy.
Are at Hampton Academy, and there's an awful lot of them that are athletic, but there's a lot of non-athletic, et cetera, and I thought, we talked about this, and we agreed a few years ago, that all stipended positions, every single one of them, would be advertised, and it would be in like, April or so, for the following year, and if several people, for example, wanted to apply for the play, you know, and we had somebody who had been doing a good job for a long time, I mean, it's not really that they wouldn't get it, but it keeps things on the up and up, and then all of those, all of those contracts need to be signed by the person that's doing it, and back to you folks by like now.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure how you couldn't have known that people.
They didn't have the positions filled, and then they didn't tell me when they did fill them, to the point where they hired people for track that were never even fingerprinted.
Well, we better fix that, I don't know who's gonna fix it, but it needs to get fixed.
Believe me, I was, because they're yelling at me because they didn't get paid.
Oh, I'm sure they would.
And I had no information, some of them, we didn't even have I9s on.
Well, we had a glitch, okay, and we need to fix it.
We need to fix it, 100%, I agree, because it's frustrating for me, too.
And we have two new administrators coming in.
I'm not a stickler particularly about knowing every single thing that goes on within this district, okay, but I think when some people didn't get paid, the board should have been notified, because we're the people that get calls from the people that didn't get paid, and we go, really? So, I think.
Oh, I guess I didn't know who didn't get paid, because I paid everybody.
Yeah, we didn't know who did not get paid.
So, she issued the checks, the checks were issued.
I don't know.
They bounced back in the bank system. It was not that the checks weren't issued, is my understanding, from what she said.
I don't even really care about the process, okay, but at some point in time, you must have known that some people didn't get paid, I'm sure they came running to you and said, hey, what, what, what's going?
I don't, okay.
Are you talking about coaches, or are you talking about the other thing?
I'm talking about anybody that didn't get paid, coaches or.
Second run checks.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I paid them, like, there were three people that were not on my list, that were, I had to hunt down for payroll information, because they weren't even in my system, two of them, one wasn't fingerprinted, and I paid them instantly when I was done, so I don't understand why it was an issue.
A mountain out of a molehill, but when things like that happen, I think the board should be notified, and I'll leave it at that.
Is there any way, because, for instance, in the spring, when you advertise these, when these positions, not you, when the positions are advertised, and some of them don't get filled until the coming year, so you don't know, so what can we do so that you can be updated on who is, who's coaching, for instance, basketball, when you didn't have anybody in the spring apply or put in, what can we do to help?
Communication, just communication, it's very hard for me to.
It's either the AD and/or the principal's job.
So, we have.
Used to be my job.
So, we have an AD, right, who will be the same AD next year.
As we know.
Do we know if everything was advertised this past fall?
I don't know.
I mean, nobody in this room is in charge of it.
Right, so that's one place that just needs to be tightened up, we need to tighten up on that, so we don't have this happen again, and so, Mariah is aware of who's coaching, so she knows who to issue contracts for and who to pay.
I mean, there are, I mean, life happens, there are issues that get missed, people get missed, and there's never an intention not to pay somebody, but as soon as something's found out, I am working to try to figure it out, it may not happen instantly, but if it was recently, it's just been me for over a month and a half, trying to do two jobs, so it could and might have taken a little bit longer, but when there was an incident with the bank statement, I was on that at home, doing it from my house, in the middle of the night, trying to fix it.
But the bigger issue is issuing a check to somebody who's not fingerprinted, because that is a legal issue, and that is something that we could get in trouble with, not because you did it, but because we allowed it to happen, because we as a board are responsible for that, and if that happened, and we got cited, we could get in trouble for it.
This is the first time I'm hearing this, by the way.
So, the AD is gonna have to really communicate.
Fingerprint, yeah, and if they're not too far.
Carefully with you to make sure that we have everything above board that needs to be.
Well, I think what happens is, you have an AD, that's a long-term AD, is on the ball, knows what they're doing, and so on and so forth, and then all of a sudden, you get somebody else, and they don't know all the ins and outs of, you know, getting checks for officials, et cetera, et cetera, but.
Well, and Nancy was also out, too, and she used to take full charge of that, and she was out, so it was one of those things where I was trying to help Nancy, too, with some of her checks and her student activities, and she was out, so it was a little wonky of a year for some of those items.
And there were a lot of changes that were made during the year, right, so the unified teams were added during the year, I think the additional basketball teams were added after the year had started, so there were.
Additional track people were added that I didn't know about.
So, a lot of things, a lot of changes happened, maybe when they, later than they should have.
With due respect, it's not that hard.
Yep.
I've done it 150,000 times, it's not that hard.
Nope, it's just notification.
Notification, if I got the notification, it would not have been that hard.
Who does the AD report up to, the principal or the assistant?
The principal.
The principal. So, we got a new principal, that'll be, it's gonna be something for Lois's list to, to make sure Neil's aware of.
It's not just at the academy, on a smaller degree at the other schools.
Yes, correct.
Then the person who didn't get fingerprinted isn't an employee of our school system.
He is now.
He is now.
Well, yes, we had to get him fingerprinted and give him an I9 and.
So, it was dealt with.
It was dealt with, it was completely dealt with, but it was very chaotic, because I didn't even know he was supposed to be paid, I didn't know he was a coach, we didn't know he was working here, we had no idea, and then it becomes a rabbit hole.
I guess I have a yes/no question, was he working for the Hampton School System other than coaching?
No.
Okay, so that's all I wanted to know, because that would have been.
No, 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 no.
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 This is just an out.
Just a coach that didn't get fingerprinted, which is not really.
Because we didn't know that he was working, nobody even told us.
Is this a former student?
It sounds like it, yes.
So, I know who you're talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, but still, it shouldn't have happened.
And who may have actually been under 18 at the time, he may have been under 18 at the time, so there may have been some thought.
It's a student, a senior.
Yep.
Yep, I know who it is.
I mean, believe me, there was, there was a few things that went wrong with that, completely 100%, and we tried to work through them, maybe not as fast as the coaches would like, but we did it as fast as we possibly could.
So, I would vote, it sounds like, maybe, not literally vote, but my two cents, maybe touch base with us in September, October, and just give us an idea how it's going.
I'll put it on our agenda.
The AD kind of get it together a little bit more this year, make sure that the principal's aware and kind of taking care of it, and let us know so you don't get caught up in that again.
I would suggest that if, for some reason, those jobs didn't get posted, that they get posted.
Yep, right away.
Tomorrow.
They were in April.
So, I have multiple emails, starting at the beginning of last year, all the way to, because I have set payrolls for each coach section, so I set my coach positions up now, and I have second pays, so I have a pay period 10, a pay period 18, a pay period 22, so that they're set up to be like paid, those pay periods, and I make my contracts out of their position, so their payroll is set up when they're getting their contract, so that they automatically know that they get paid, so I was having constant sending spreadsheets back and forth, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on, and then it gets to a point where you're just so busy that you're not, I can't keep continuing to babysit where the positions are, but yes, I will be more diligent with that.
I want to just touch base with you.
Yes.
Know how it goes this year.
And again, you're probably gonna have this year, you've got some positions that are still open.
Yeah.
Not many, but yeah, and, I know one, because somebody asked me about it.
Okay, do we have any more questions for Mariah? All good? All right, so, I think next on our list, we have resignations and nominations, do, are we good talking through all of these in public? Does anyone have anything we need to discuss about these specific candidates and people who have resigned in non-public?
It doesn't have to be non-public, but I had a question for Dr. Casa, when's the final day that a person can resign?
You know, it's, we prefer it be, in the contract, it is July, is it July 15th, Mariah?
Yes.
July 15th.
Then these all made it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they, these did make it, I know that July 1 is preferred, but July 15 is the drop dead date.
Are we anticipating any more?
You know, that's the million-dollar question, I'm hearing rumblings that there could be, but this is what I have for you today.
While we're discussing dates, let's talk about retirement dates, so, what is the date that retirements are supposed to be handed in?
It's supposed to be in December.
Yep, so, we have.
November, and then, yeah.
Drop dead by the, yeah.
December, yeah, between November and December.
So, like, my understanding, I have a colleague who's on the SAU 21 Board, they do not accept resignation, I mean, sorry, retirements after their retirement date.
They can accept them, but, but, they accept that somebody's leaving, because, I mean, how can you not?
Right, you can't make those statements.
But they won't pay them the retirement stipend if they don't meet the contractual date, they've waffled a little bit over the years, as have we, but I think, but you're right, I think they've come down pretty hard on that.
Yeah, I just feel like we've maybe gotten a little loose.
It's definitely something to think about as we get into critical shortage areas, I think that that's what we're starting to see, I know that we've been really fortunate in the last several years that we've been able to fill, which is wonderful, but I agree, I think it's something we're gonna have to really think about as these pools become smaller and smaller.
I don't begrudge anyone.
People know the retirement date, that they have to get their letter in, in order to be contractually obligated to get their retirement stipend, but.
But it's a very hard thing for people to pull the trigger and say, I'm, I'm leaving. And, and that's why they put it off.
Yep. Yeah, and I just, I just feel like this year, we might wanna just try to encourage anyone thinking about it.
We have encouraged, and the association, I know, has encouraged, and it's, worst-case scenario, they don't get the retirement stipend.
I just, I mean, I'm sure from Mariah's standpoint, the sooner she knows, the sooner she can get all that worked out. So when her, it's the end of June, she has a really good idea what her numbers are, right?
It helps, that's why they do that, yeah.
Anyway, just throwing that out there. Okay, do we want to do, do you want to do resignations first or nominations?
I think you have to do the resignations first.
Our first nomination, or I'm sorry, our first resignation is Hannah Kaplan, second grade teacher at Center School.
I would move that to accept her resignation.
Have a second? Any questions or discussion? Nope? All in favor? Thank you. Eight, second is, I hope I don't butcher this name, Felicia Formasano.
That's correct.
She is resigning from Hampton Academy. She has accepted another position. All those in favor? Those, everything else that I have, do you have any? Were those the only resignations?
That's all I have.
Okay, there's only two that I have.
For tonight. Yep, and then we have some nominations.
Yep. All right, I'll let you, happy to let you do the nominations if you'd like.
I'd like to start with, I'd like to nominate Mallory Richards for the nurse position. We spoke about this last month. It's in your board packet. It's in.
Second.
They've already worked out who's gonna do the field trips, too. So they're really done some nice proactive planning where she's going to be at Hampton Academy in the mornings, she's gonna be at Center in the afternoons. They're going to have Laura do the DC trip. And Kathy Connolly and Mallory are going to split the environmental camp trip. So we've got those covered, too. So I think this is gonna be a real plus for all of us.
All those in favor of Mallory Richards is the floating nurse position?
Okay. And so you know that, starting at, I guess I'll go in order. And Hannah's replacement is Colleen Lightner. I'd like to nominate Colleen for the second grade position.
I'd move that.
I'll second. Go ahead, Jenny. Jenny, second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Thank you. And then going to Marsden School, we have May Burnap that I'd like to nominate that will be replacing Emily Moore in third grade.
I'd move her.
Second that one. Questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. And finally, Samantha Corwin, who will be replacing Felicia Formasano in the math interventionist.
I'd move that nomination.
I'll second. Questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. I would like to talk about the Center School, but we can talk about that probably in non-public. Yep.
Policies? Policies. So these are, all first reads?
I would move them all. They're all first reads.
Actually, we don't, I don't think we have to do anything for first reads, right? We just bring them back together?
Oh, fine.
I don't, unless I'm mistaken. We'll look at those next month, but any questions? Everybody have any questions?
I, I had an observation.
Yes, of course.
I have to find it.
Okay.
There was one. Yes, it was EG, the Creation of Communication Plans.
Yes.
And they have put that all on your plate, Lois. And I just wanted to say good luck to you.
I mean, realistically, if I remember right, it's, I think Lois basically has to gather it all together.
Yep.
From, from her administrative team, right?
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm also sure that you might be talking with other superintendents.
We sure are.
About, about this already?
Yep. We are.
If you were doing it, it would take weeks, weeks, I think.
Yeah, the Crisis Communication Plan, we work with our administrators on that along with our safety teams. So there is some definite, like, there's some funneling out of that information as well, which helps.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Minutes, we have regular minutes from Tuesday, May 21st. Anybody have any comments or changes?
I would move the regular minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Did you vote?
And we have non-public minutes from May 21st.
I would move those.
I'll second that. All those in favor? And do we want to seal those?
I'm sorry?
I said, do we want to seal those minutes? Don't necessarily know that we have to, just checking to see if anybody had it up yet. Okay. All right, so I think we are good on minutes. See, do we have anyone here who would like to make a public comment? Seeing no one, public comment is good. Would you like to?
Well, and before we go into non-public, we, we said we would talk about it, whether we thought we would need a July 16th meeting.
The only comment on it is that we have three new administrators that we could meet. We don't have to, we can wait and meet them in August.
I'm, I'm open either way. Doesn't matter to me.
So how many, how many professional positions are we still hiring for?
Three?
Just three?
Yep.
I don't have a strong feeling on it. I feel like we, I mean, I say that. I feel like we used to not have July meetings, right?
We've gone both ways.
Yeah. Okay.
On it. But if we don't have an urgent need, then I would suggest that we don't. If we do have a meeting, I would suggest that we eliminate all the reports and all that stuff.
I think that, I think we still probably should check in where we've got some positions. We're not sure if people are gonna resign.
Okay.
Goodness knows what else can come up.
The only thing I ask is if we do something in August, so you guys can vote on my fund balance.
Okay. Yeah, we'll definitely have one in August.
Yep, that's the only thing I really need.
So I'd make the motion that we do have a meeting July 16th. However, I don't know if we need to have the, the other principals there. And, you know, it is, you try to give them a little bit of summertime.
Why couldn't the new guys come for like five minutes? I mean, because none of us have, who weren't on the committees, haven't met them.
True.
That sounds good.
That sounds great. We can do that, and then in the absence of not needing till then, you're giving me permission to hire, and I will give you a prize, as I always do. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And I will bring you all the paperwork. Okay. And I can get, for Center, it's the, we're gonna talk about this, we're gonna talk about Center, but Marsden, it is just a case manager position. And Hampton Academy, it's a school psychologist position. And then, of course, we do have some para openings. But those are the professional staff, but I would like to talk about Center.
So we are going to meet, we're going to ask the three new administrators to come in for a few minutes.
Just to put a name with a face. I think that's a nice thing.
Okay, that sounds good.
Unless they've planned family vacations.
All right.
They shouldn't, because they're not in work July 1st. They shouldn't be having vacations.
Well, they're gonna be right there at those retreats on July 1st.
At the same, at the same time, they have families, they have been working other jobs up until the end of June.
But they also is excited and like to share their enthusiasm.
It is not great if somebody does have something.
And it's good to know that they're also, they're involved with the hiring. You may have noticed their names. So they are, they have started, just so you know.
I saw that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Would anyone like to move non-public session? Oh, I have to move. Someday I'll get good at this. I move we go into non-public session under RSA 91-a colon 3 to A. Les? Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next.
Well, someone's gonna put a vote to adjourn.
Okay, to, actually, do we need, do we need to do roll call to come out? We, we didn't come out of non-public.
We just did.
No.
Yes.
We didn't, roll call to come out of non-public.
So moved.
Okay. Aye, aye, we did something different. Hold on. Aye, we voted to adjourn, but we were still in non-public. So.
We vote, never mind.
So now you adjourn, regular meeting.
Do I have to wait for the light?
It's on.
It's on.
Oh. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Aye, okay. I second.[1791.44]